Yeah, Betsy.
But weren't we?
Yep, it worked.
So.
That was probably the problem, your old computer, maybe.
It could have been, yeah.
No?
Yeah, it could have been. Yeah, but Cory's is.
Yeah, hers is not real.
She's been having that.
Morning, Kate.
Hey. Hey, she'll have three minutes before I send you here.
Yes. I'm taking bets.
Everybody says, Kate, you're gonna say they'll show up in one day.
Okay, so before the commission meeting officially begins, we'll go ahead and introduce our new hires. Um, so I'll have you guys just stand up, introduce yourselves, um, where you work, your role, and when you started, and then the commission will introduce themselves. What kind of stuff?
I'm Mr. Rossi, I'm CEO over here at the detention center. I started on the first of this month.
Preston Miller, I'm also CEO at the detention center, and I started January 4th.
Jason Anderson, I'm your new assistant, road supervisor, and I started just last Wednesday.
I'm Abigail Gonzalez, I'm the nocturnal community administration assistant.
And you started?
I started March 10th.
I'm Stephanie Peter, I'm the district court trustee, I've been around for a little while, um, but I hadn't done the training, and I have some new people, so I said I'd go through it with them.
I'm Virginia Hannah, I work with Court Stephanie, and I started in February. Court trustee's office.
Liz Folsom White, I work with Stephanie at the court trustee's office, and I started the same February 1st.
And a little bit of backstory, recently Jay had already been doing this job, um, in February, we kind of merged with, we're the eighth judicial district court trustee, we merged with the ninth judicial district court trustee, their trustee wanted to retire, um, but he wanted to have his program continue, and their chief judge reached out and basically hired us to do theirs also, so I got the employees who'd already been doing the work, so we're now the eighth and the ninth judicial district court trustee.
I'm not familiar with what all counties are in the ninth.
Uh, Harvey and McRusson.
Okay.
So they kind of neighbor us right down there, so yeah, we're doing that, and we're doing child support and also their debt collection contract, like we do for the eighth.
Nice. And those, you two are, you guys don't live in Gary County, you guys are, you work from home down there.
Yes.
Yes. So wel- welcome to all of you, appreciate you coming in, and I'm really, I think that having this, Crystal just started the new orientation, and I think it helps, you know, we are a team, everybody, you know, I know everybody seems to think, oh, I work at this office, you know, but we are trying to, you know, build the team mentality, and so I think doing this, uh, is a great, uh, program, so welcome, all of you.
You want to start by introducing yourselves?
Oh, my name's Trish Yarom, District One, uh, District One is, uh, mostly the southwest part of town, um, we're broken up into three districts, and, um, that's my district.
I'm Kathy Tremont in District Two, and I think I've got like from Jefferson to Spring Valley, and then, yeah, part down that way, and a lot of Westwood and, uh, North.
And I'm Keith Asher, I'm District Three, um, pretty much everything south and east is my territory. Um, I have part of Junction City and Grandview Plaza, and then this is, uh, Skyline to the south, so.
And these guys do have a YouTube channel, um, YouTube channel. So if you are interested in watching the meetings, it is recorded every Monday, so you can go out and watch your commissioners and see what all they talk about and discuss during the Monday meetings. Or if you're a department head or elected official, your department head, like, who are you, Pat? Um, at some date, and you want to know what they said, you can go back in a minute. And I'm Tiffany Havener, I work in HR, I do the payroll, payroll specialist.
And Teresa.
And Teresa, she is from the county clerk, she's a deputy clerk, and she does the minutes and keeps these guys in line.
She's our mother hen.
And we need it. Not, not the. Well, you, you guys will be on YouTube, because it's on now, so.
Fifteen minutes of saying, and I'm Crystal Malcho, I'm the HR director, so, and I'll be back in fifteen minutes for my update, so. All right, thank you guys very much, I really appreciate it, as I said, we'll have any questions, reach out, we'll help you out whenever we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, time has arrived. We'll stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, in the fiscal, with liberty and justice for all.
So, who wants to read off? I'm going to go personal, do the.
I can't hear, I can't, we can't shut the door. We can't shut the door, Pat. Pat? Pat? We can't shut the door.
Oh, I can't shut the door, okay, it's just really.
I know, it is. It is. We'll try to talk loud. I, Kathy, do you want to do the proclamation, you were in, if you want to read it.
Well, I did, we just had it in our packet, nobody's saying anything, so I just asked about it, I didn't necessarily, um, I wasn't sure, and it looked a little bit more, uh, generic than what it was, which is fine.
Well, yeah, there's a lot of different. And I got, I told them to send it to you, because I knew that you had reached out and sent that to you, um. I mean, that was more.
Did we read it, or, um? Yeah, we.
But I can read it if you want, I just didn't want to take it literally, whatever you.
Go ahead, it, uh, that's fine.
Okay. Um, so I'd like to, uh, do the, uh, proclamation for the week of the child, which is April 5th through the 11th, 2025, um, whereas all young children deserve equality, early learning environments that support them as capable and competent lifelong learners, and whereas nurturing parenting quality and accessible childcare and early education programs build brain, build strong brains during the critical years from birth age to five, and whereas investments in babies and young children have profound impacts on creating a strong and vibrant community, and whereas these organizations are working to improve equitable learning opportunities that can provide a foundation of learning for children in Gary County, and whereas early childhood educators and others who make a difference in the lives of young children deserve thanks or recognition and support, and whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to Gary County's families, communities, and economies. Now, therefore, Gary County, the Gary County Commission do hereby proclaim April 5th through 11th, 2025, as the week of the young child in Gary County, and encourage all citizens to support and invest in early childhood education in our community.
I wasn't sure, um, Trish, how that went, since the one that we had, you know, was the, for loving arms, and we just made it more generic to cover all.
Everything, yeah, that's all I was asking, because.
Okay, sure, I, yeah, and I'd like to say.
I mean, loving arms is a good, good, a good, um, but we have like twenty, you know, eighteen to twenty, so I wanted to make it more inclusive. Um, and then I also had, uh, a childcare coalition, um, uh, letters of support, um, they are putting in for the Childcare Zone grant from the Department of Health and Environment, and this funding will play a critical role in expanding the childcare services in Gary and Dickinson County, because we are partnering with them, the Coalition is, um, increasing capacity and supporting working families and strengthening our workforce, so, um, I would ask that we, uh, sign this letter. I didn't have it done before the packet, because my new computer was giving me some problems, but I think I know how to use it now.
Do I have a motion?
Um, I make the motion to, um, sign that letter, so.
I'll second it.
The member that's signing it, all on paper, we say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's see, Gary.
And Teresa, if we could just add it to the packet, so if somebody who's watching wants to see what it says, so that perhaps, since I didn't get it in time.
Yeah.
Want me to just continue with my, um, updates, though? Okay. Um, is, is, uh, it looks like, um, Betsy's here, but.
Yeah.
So I, uh, attended, um, the Pawnee Mental Health, uh, board meeting, and, um, uh, things are going well with them, they are, they had a fundraiser called, uh, Pancakes for Pawnee that they held, um, in Manhattan, and they are looking to do something similar here, where they have a pancake feed, and it's a fundraiser for Pawnee Mental Health, so, um, uh, looking forward for them to do that locally, so we can, um, have some people support that organization through, um, Gary County. And then I, um, was asked to, uh, speak at the Ladies Reading Club, um, along with, uh, Beth Hudson and, uh, Lindsay Snyder, um, just talking about different, um, things that we went through in our careers, as far as, um, working our way up, um, the ladder, and, um, uh, in our various roles that we have taken. Um, and then I, uh, met with, um, the new, uh, city commissioner, Ricardo Gutierrez, um, he is, uh, hitting the ground running with, um, a lot of stuff that he's doing, um, he, uh, asked, uh, if we would consider, um, in June, um, they're having some, uh, some, uh, kids that come here for, um, religious, uh, classes, but, um, at night, but during the day, um, they go around and, um, assist elderly disabled people with cleaning up yards, and, um, not only with like grass and, and trees and stuff, but like getting rid of junk, um. So we were just talking, and he, he was wanting to know if he would do, uh, like, be able to have them dump for free, but what I told him was, you know, maybe we can, and we can put this on the, for a later discussion, since it's not until June, but maybe sometime in June, um, have a, an amnesty day where anybody can bring any trash down to the transfer station, um, and, uh, for free, and that might, you know, motivate people to, uh, clean up around the county, not only in the city, but in the county as well. I mean, I think that's something we can discuss with Jeremy, um, and then see how that would work, but I don't know if that would be something you guys would, uh, consider working at.
Yeah, it sounds good to me, I think it's always good to have that opportunity.
Yeah, instead of just doing it for one group, let's just have maybe a whole amnesty day, so, yeah, we can put that on the agenda here pretty soon. Um, and then, um, I, uh, attended, um, uh, the Black History Channel event that was at the Opera House on Thursday night, um, um, the author, I cannot remember his name, but, uh, he wrote a book about, uh, Black Wall Street in Oklahoma, and, uh, I've always been really interested in that, so I was really looking forward to going to that, and, um, that is, uh, was an amazing presentation on what, what happened there, and, uh, the, uh, atrocities, atrocities that happened, um, um, during that time, um, and pretty decimated that whole area. Um, it was nice to hear that they rebuilt, but then was decimated again through, uh, gentrification and rural development. Um, so I, I am going to read that book, um, it's a huge book, but, um, uh, but. Are you, are you enjoying it? I mean, it's sad.
He's very worried.
Oh.
He's very worried. But, yeah.
Yeah.
I was interested, because they were going to connect it to East Nine.
And they did in the presentation.
I know, but there's nowhere like, I think there were clothing stores and dress shops, and bakeries and restaurants. I don't, I don't see the connection.
Well, there's some, during the, the presentation, they did, uh, mirror it to, um, East Nine Street, and, and while there was some, um, illicit stuff going down into East Nine Street, there were people that lived down there, and, and, and there were legitimate businesses down there, cafes and, and those kind of things, so, so, yeah, it was really interesting, I was, I was really glad that I went to that. Um, and then, um, uh, that's pretty much all I did, um, work wise, um, but I did, Betsy, I'm just, I know, uh, we need to get that EMS contract done, I mean, this hap, you know, the, the, they made their decision in February, and, um, I did talk to Peter, and, uh, I'd like it on the agenda to be for approval next week.
That was.
I hope so.
Okay. I haven't.
Okay, I haven't talked with. I told him, I, well, I, I wanted to try to do it, but he didn't think he was going to have enough time to, to look.
Mr. Spies is out of town, and I, I didn't seem to know where this.
He's not out of town until Wednesday, until Wednesday, and then we'll see that. Um, I think next Monday, so.
Okay.
So that could work. Yeah. Okay.
And then, because they're going to try to put it on the agenda the next day, whatever the, is it the eighth?
For that Tuesday afternoon.
Yes.
The Farchi told me that, um, since Peter was gone, that Britton was drawing up the.
And he did, and because, you know, I, I understand Peter's busy, but it's been overwhelming, so. So, yeah, it, it just needs, we need to get it done, I mean, it's been dragging on long enough, so.
So that's all. Agree. Um, I, our, my chamber, uh, board meeting was postponed or, or canceled, so I didn't have that, but I did have, um, several volunteer opportunities, it took me into four thirty in the morning on Thursday, so I was kind of busy with some of those things, but, um, otherwise, I hope to, um, I, I haven't been to a chamber meeting yet, it's been one thing or another since January, so I haven't been able to attend one of those, so hopefully next month I'll be able to, to go to one of those meetings, but otherwise, I've just been, um, doing some, having some volunteer.
What'd you do, four thirty in the morning?
We had some museum stuff, I've been wakeful, and then we also had, uh, uh, my friend and I work at the Little Bridges consignment cell in Manhattan, and I had over two hundred and fifty items I needed to get in our system before ten AM on Thursday, so was busy with that stuff, so, that's it.
Well, I didn't have any meetings last week, um, but I, we were at the, uh, Military Affairs Breakfast.
Yeah, I thought about that.
And, um, I thought that was very intriguing to hear what the CG had to tell us, you know, and what we, we probably ought to be planning, I've been thinking about this on, with our budget for, well, what do you say, October twenty-sixth to March twenty-seventh?
Timmy, sorry you brought that up.
Okay.
Especially for our sales tax.
Right, and I wondered whether we want to back that number down a little bit.
Yeah, Timmy already mentioned that, as well as having an extra, an extra pay, uh.
The paper, yeah.
So, yeah, it's going to be a challenging budget.
Just so everybody's aware of it, um, and then, this was on my desk, I'll let you know, it, it has to do with the fight for all, and money, and using CDB money.
Do they, um, do more, uh?
Well, this is, was on my desk when I walked in.
Rick brought that in this morning, and he said, Mickey gave me this, he said, I'm not really sure why I'm doing this, or something, I don't know, that this was in response to Keith saying they wanted more information for this money that they're asking.
The city has the same question.
Well, and it says on there the school, too, so they're asking, like, from the school, school district. Because that's a, to me, that's a letter of support, but doesn't really say what they're going to do with it, to me.
Well, and I didn't, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see the dollar amount.
Almost, yeah.
How much?
Two months ago.
Yeah, but how much was the amount that they were, oh, that's, twenty-five hundred?
I think so, I think you're right.
I think it was twenty-five hundred. I know.
But that's when we said it probably had fit better under CDB than with us, so.
Yeah, but then we also said, this needs to be a little bit more detailed on what you're going to use it for, asking for money, and.
Well, this.
It just says, a new program integrating sports leadership into team building activities, which I don't have a problem with doing, but I, I feel like we need to have more information.
That, to me, is about the same as what we saw the first time.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not broke down.
Nope. And I know the city asked the same thing, you know, what are you going to be using the money for?
So I don't know what direction you want to take on that, um.
Well, I guess we could talk to Rick when they come in.
Well, but it also says to meet with, uh, Mickey at the very bottom of that post, and that would.
Mickey can come and, and meet with us here in the meeting.
She's coming on April twenty-eighth, I couldn't get her in any sooner because of her personal.
Well, then, we'll just wait till then.
Yes, said her mom.
Family, yeah.
Anything else, anybody? Nora, Crystal, are you ready?
Good morning again, commission, Crystal Malcho, HR Director, Special Projects, I do have one out of office notification for late April. I mean, I'll try to re-grab it this time. And our department head meeting, uh, went on a little long last time, so we, uh, failed to discuss how we were going to, um, update the survey options for the website, so different options include having some printed copies available here, so anybody that wants to can come, pick one up, fill it out, we can have a box, they just drop it in, shouldn't be an issue. Um, same thing, we can put a paper for a link to the document on the website, they would be able to download it, fill it out, mail it in or bring it in, if they email it, it's no longer confidential, um, the only other option I could think of would be to do a Survey Monkey, one where we set it up, ask a question, so it's an anonymous response, like, nothing gets tied to them, but it would have to be one email that receives the responses, I think I can set it up for GE commissioners to be the recipient for that, so then all three of you would get the information, um, but I wasn't sure in what direction the commission wanted to go.
I've been working on the spreadsheet, trying to get some of that on there, Crystal, you could take one, they just, to give you an idea, if you're putting stuff like a Survey Monkey together, but, you know, um, our, our survey, I think we had, uh, the right questions to ask, but even, I think I've got around fifty here that I got done, um, they're pretty lengthy, and, uh, yet, I, I guess I'm not surprised that we, here's a copy of it for you, too, Keith, you might look at it, Teresa wants to look at it, too. I'm not surprised that we would have that many, uh, responses, but that's been quite a, a task to try to, that's just like almost fifty responses, but you see each one of the four questions that were asked, then I, uh, put, I'm, I listed every response, so we could see, you know, what every, we could see every opinion or comment, I think that that's important, and then the Xs just, uh, are indicating how, you know, each one that was a repeated response. So if, on that Survey Monkey, whenever we do anything, I think the, uh, there needs to be a comment to limit your, um, comment, because, you know, that's just hard, you know, because I know it's important to anybody that's writing their comment, but, you know, um.
Well, there's other things, well, that's the limit response to five hundred characters or whatever, so.
Yeah, but, yeah, I, on, on these, I, because it's our first time, and whatever, I found to share with you guys, um, I wrote verbatim what everybody said, just, you know, but, uh, I don't know, um, if, if that's, you know, the information that you are liking to see, or if there's something different that I can put on there, because, you know, after reading each one of them, I could have put them some in a different category, but then again, uh, there's a few of them that I put, see Survey Number Seven, because it was like two pages, and we had a, it had a lot of information on there, so I, I condensed my comment, and then I put on there to see that, and then I numbered the, each survey, so I said, like, prefer to Survey Seven to see the rest of it, if, if somebody had questions on what was on my paper that I, I didn't have that reference there, so. But that's what I'm, I'm working on, but, yeah, it's been, I didn't know, I, I've tried several times, and I'm not necessarily a spreadsheet guru, but I did my best trying to.
That's really good.
To put, uh, with the, put the responses on there, and, you know, just us give, uh, you know, we had a lot of city comments on there, and stuff.
We knew, you know, we thought so.
And I bolded them, so that when I get done, I think I'll take it out and put it on to a separate page, but just like to keep my comments while I was generating the report, is how I did that, but, uh, there's a lot of good comments to make you think, you know, and I guess that was the purpose of the survey, is to see and get different ideas of, um, how we could do things better, or, um, you know, do something different, but, you know, I was surprised, yeah.
So, can we break out some of the city stuff and pass that on to them?
That's why I said the ones I bolded them on there, so that I'm going to cut it, cut it, I'm going to cut it and paste on to a separate.
He was reading.
Right.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, it might be beneficial.
Sure, well, and that's what I thought, and I talked to Pat Landis once, and I said, we had been getting some surveys, I said, it had some, um, city comments on there, if you're wanting the information, I said, I don't think there'd be a problem with sharing, I would think that they would appreciate the information.
No, I agree.
So, anyway, that's just some food for thought for you.
So what, what's the direction you want me to go with the survey now?
I'd say go ahead and do the, the Survey Monkey, I think that would be easier.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Um, next, as a refresher, the Employee Task Force met, and we've got our fundraiser coming up in June, um, at, um, the golf tournament, which seems to have been really popular over the last few years, under Sheriff Stopper is still the, the main contact for that, as far as the tournament itself goes, the sponsorships, Tiffany Havener and, uh, Human Resources is the contact for that. Um, they'll be looking for volunteers again to help out, you know, be at the different holes, so they could help people, uh, but as we get closer to that, we'll provide more information as to who, where, when, all that kind of stuff.
Is that June the seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we are asking, uh, we, we had not in the past asked the commission itself for a Gary County contribution towards these fundraisers, so obviously we don't have anything, um, in the budget for 2025, but I would encourage the commission as a whole or individually to determine if you would like to support this fundraiser, um, and of course, you don't have to answer right now, but to consider supporting, um, our investment in the community and supporting the children and the youth in, uh, Gary County.
How has it been done in the past, is there, you know, is the commission?
This is the first time I've actually thought to ask, and it was brought up at our, our Employee Task Force last time, so.
Is it Big Brothers, Big Sisters?
Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So when I do my budget for, uh, 2026, I may ask in there whether it was a fifty dollar donation or just something from the commission, uh, but to donate to, to show the support for the Employee Task Force fundraiser, so do something for that. We do have our, uh, Training Day Chairs, um, I asked the, uh, Employee Task members to identify, um, people that may be interested in chairing the event, or have people self-nominate, I had a few, um, one was close, but they hadn't been on the committee an entire year before, so I thought it was really important for somebody to have been on the committee, so they understand the ins and outs of it a bit, um, Jackie was our chair last year, Tiffany was interested in it this year, but didn't think she could handle all of it by herself, so Tiffany and Jackie will be co-chairs this year, so that way we've got somebody experienced that's run it, and then Tiffany, who is on the committee, will help chair it this year, so maybe in the future, we can just try to do that, get somebody that's had experience, and make somebody else to do it that way, co-chair, and that way they can share the responsibility. Um, I've had a little bit of a conversation with them about the topic, um, we're looking at, uh, potentially Whole Wellness, um, about how we went ahead and met in person for our governing board meeting, the KAC, um, touched on a lot of the bills that were presented on Wednesday, and something Jay would say, okay, and this is where we're at, and then half an hour later, he'd go, okay, they're taking a vote on that now, so it was ever-changing during our meeting, and then the county comments that were sent out on Friday had some additional updates on where some of those bills, um, ran. Um, one thing that Jay really wants us to focus on is that he's been getting a lot of inquiries on the open records responses, and he's been doing classes on it, he's more than willing to visit with us, he just says, hey, guys, remember, let me know before it becomes an issue, if you have a question on how to respond, or if you should respond, if you're not getting, uh, you know, the, the feedback you need, we've got a good resource, but not everybody does, um, so to reach out to him before it becomes an issue. Uh, one of the things that, uh, he gets lots of questions on is the duty separation, so by. Uh, one of the things that, uh, he gets lots of questions on is the duty separation. So by elected official, I think they've got county managers and county administrators and what the commission's responsible for. So he's taking lots of those calls as well. And then there is a grants guide, uh, from the Department of Commerce that was, has been mailed to all the county clerks. So it's a list about how to apply for grants, what grants are available, et cetera. So, um, I don't know if Courtney's received hers yet or not, but I do know that they said that the, uh, Kansas Department of Commerce mailed a hard copy of the grant guide to every county clerk. So that's something if we're interested in looking at other, um, grants and things, we should check with Courtney and see what she's got available. And, um, they're continuing to update their updated Kansas County mandated services sheet. So they're starting to get more feedback from the other counties that hadn't responded before. So, um, they have that on the KAC website. So if you're interested in saying, you know, we're mandated to offer this service, but we don't get any money from the state, this is how much it's costing us, our citizens, et cetera, to provide this mandate that's unfunded. So we have to take care of it.
They're putting together that information?
Mm-hmm.
From us?
From all the counties.
From other, yeah. And then they're, they're gonna present it to the legislators?
I don't know what eventually that they're planning on doing with it, but I know that it helps our, the different counties educate their public, you know, because they're upset about increasing taxes or whatever, but.
Yeah, no, I, I, when we get that done for us, I'd like a copy.
Tammy, Tammy has already responded on behalf of Geary County to that, because it's all being compiled for statewide.
Okay.
So I sent it to Tammy because I figured she'd have all the numbers that they were requesting and she responded.
No, I think that's great, because I don't think our legislators understand that, how much they make us do and then yell at us because they don't think that we're lowering taxes.
So that, I mean, granted, that's not everything we talked about, but it's a good summary of some of the key topics that we addressed at the board meeting. Our next board meeting will be, I think it's April thirtieth, but it's the last Wednesday in April and it'll be onsite in Topeka. So, and then I, uh, don't have any other, uh, speaking engagements until June when I speak at the Kansas Association of Local Health Departments. Any, any questions? Yes. Yeah, I've been visiting with Betsy about some other issues I'm dealing with right now. Yeah. Any questions, concerns, comments for Human Resources or my office?
You got the.
I got it. All right. You guys know where to find me if you need me. And Betsy, when you're done, if you want to follow up on that, I'll let you know. The issues I've talked with you about, I'm sorry.
Just because we were talking about the survey. So, uh, I got an email from a company in Illinois. I don't know if you guys got it. They must have an AI, um, program that reaches out when they, when like people talk and they said that they watched our meeting on the twenty-fourth. And we were talking about, because of the survey on, and, uh, they wanted to offer their services, but I, I think right now we'll just do this and then if we go forward, you know, feel like we're gonna go again, but I just thought, well, if you're buying some company in Illinois watching our meeting, I'm sure they have an AI, AI program that grabs whatever people are saying, so.
Big Brothers watching.
Yep.
Gentlemen, you ready?
Sure.
Kind of scary seeing two of you at the same time.
Especially those two.
Probably eighteen.
They have no idea.
The eighteen, oh yeah. Just like, we want to see.
Same J D guys.
Just for the public, you know, introduce yourselves and tell me.
Sorry, what? Troy Livingston, GIS Director.
Charles Lee A. Prazer.
Uh, I'm here for a couple of reasons today. First, we'll just give you guys an update on what my office has done. Uh, first quarter, pretty much of this year. Um, and I've given you guys those numbers in terms of what kind of, uh, building permits that have been issued and what kind of inspections that we've done. Kind of what the sanitarian's been up to and, and the things that he's done. I intentionally left GIS off of that list of things because I do so many different things every day. It's hard to, yeah, it's just really unique because I do things for every department, um, I work with. Fee appraisers, I work with realtors especially, title companies. I mean, it's just constant, so.
And I don't think people realize you work with every department.
Right. Hey, that was one thing that when, when the previous board actually made GIS its own department, that was one of the things that I really pushed for and wanted to get accomplished was to make sure that each department knew. It's not just mapping, right? It's about the information that is at a given location, right? So I can do stuff for everybody. Work with the appraiser's office constantly, but, uh, update ownership maps every week. Uh, I'm still helping the city out with their permitting and their code enforcement stuff and we keep those ownership maps up to date. I work with their, uh, it's his title. He's the zoning administrator, but, uh, Community Development Director. I'll work with him off and on, uh, to help him answer questions. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty constant.
He does our election, all our election maps.
Do all of their election maps and try to keep those up to date. We try to keep, uh, when we don't try. We do keep all the tax unit up to date so that the treasurer's office knows who lives in what tax districts. So, I mean, it's just ongoing. And then I've got projects that sit at my desk, a, a big to-do pile that aren't necessarily time-sensitive, but things that I would like to see accomplished and, and work with other entities to try to get accomplished. One of them that I'm working on right now is a road map for the county for the rural fire department that has the county roads set out. And this sounds like it's really simple, but the way our data is structured, it's not so easy to put like the eleven hundred block, twelve hundred block of whatever county road, so they know kind of where they're going when they get a call. And then the fire department, the Junction City Fire Department has reached out and wanted to know if I could set up uh, response areas within the C limits for them to send to the dispatch, because right now they don't have any. So, uh, we did that a long time ago for the police department and for the sheriff's department, but the, I guess the fire department got left off the list, but, so I'm working with that. So that's where we're sitting. Uh, as far as building permits and inspections and everything, we are right on par with where we were for first quarter last year. We ended up and did, but like forty-five or fifty permits last year to the tune of about fifty thousand dollars worth of permit fees and inspection fees. So, it doesn't sound like a whole lot when you're talking about the entire county budget, but for us, that's a pretty significant amount. Um, and we are certainly on par to, if meet or exceed that this year. First quarter's always slow because of the weather. And we had that big snowstorm and the cold weather had got really slow for a while. Things are really starting to pick up. Uh, you can add two more single-family homes to this list since I created this last week.
New, brand new?
Yeah, uh, we had applications come in, one Thursday and one Friday last week. So, yeah, uh, I mean, people are, are starting to build again. Building materials have come down in cost a little bit, not a lot, but some, so, uh, people are gonna build no matter what, so. Yeah, it's, it's looking pretty positive. Uh, Lance, uh, took an eight-hour class based on the soil type and the compaction rate and everything. And when you're putting a subject system out in the county, uh, there's different kinds that you can use, right? So one of, one of the alternative systems is called the Presby system and they're kind of complicated and they are expensive. So, uh, he took a class on how to design and install and inspect those, so he's a little bit more aware of how those things can go in when, uh, installers come in to do those. Uh, when, we've only got just a handful of people that are actually licensed to install subject systems in the county. We've had some people reach out and want to know how to get licensed. It requires an exam and we've been working on those. I proctor those, make sure they're not cheating, right? So, uh, but we're getting more and more people to buy into how we're doing things. We get a lot of, we used to get some complaints about how stringent we were and the regulations that we had and, uh, how we required them to meet them because their, their big complaint was, well, we don't have to do this with the city. Well, this isn't the city. And if you read their regulations, they have almost the same regulations. They're just not really enforcing those to the T, so.
Hopefully they are now that they're.
Well, I think they're getting better at doing that, right? So, uh, but you know my sanitarian, he's a stickler for details.
Yes, he is.
So, and that's turned out to be a, a good thing. It's just held everybody's feet to the fire and we're getting a better product as a result, so.
For sure.
Right? And it just saves everybody, you know, so, so-and-so built a new house. Uh, whether it's a soldier and they get PCS somewhere else, it just protects the next buyer and the next owner of those properties so that they know that it's a quality product. Exactly, right? So that's kind of where we're sitting. Last week also, uh, our appraiser reached out and said that he had had a discussion with the taxpayer that was probably not real happy with his valuation and had brought some things to their attention and a lot of it has to do with, uh, and I don't want to say illegal, but unauthorized uses of property out in the county. People that are doing things that don't necessarily have the proper permitting. As you well know, we only have three zoning districts in the county. One of them's Ag and two of them are pretty much for single-family homes and that's it. So to do anything else, you have to have a conditional use permit and these folks are doing things without the proper permits. And I know this is something that we've talked about before and I'm gonna let Travis handle a lot of this, but, uh, the big one on my plate is, uh, short-term rentals. Right? Uh, people are offering properties for rent for a week at a time, a few days at a time, and that requires not only from our perspective, a conditional use permit, but there are a whole host of things that the state requires to develop that too, that they're not doing. So problem is finding those, dealing with them and making sure that they, they meet our expectations and meet our requirements. So I think I'm probably gonna have to lean on a counselor for some of this to help enforce some of it. Some of them will comply without any issues. They're doing it unintentionally, I think.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, so as we find those letters, I'll go out from my office, uh, indicating what they are in violation of and what they need to do, bring that into compliance. And if they refuse, I'm gonna call Betsy and see if we can get something together.
I don't think, and I don't know if you've done any research on the Airbnb, we have a lockup in here.
We do.
And they're not being, like, I, I don't think the city's doing that either because it's such a new, uh, you know.
And the state, state doesn't have really any regulations other than, you know, that you pay collecting and paying sales tax, they need.
And transient guest tax.
And transient guest tax, right, which they're not doing, so.
Well, if they're registered on Airbnb, they're required to do that.
Right, they do collect, but you know, in terms, and Travis is gonna hit this one, I'm sure, but they're not being assessed properly.
No.
Because it's commercial property.
And that's a statewide issue.
It is.
Yes, I knew you were talking about addressing that.
I think the final verdict from PPD was if we can't find them all, we can't, you know.
Oh, you mean they're saying, well, if you're not.
Yeah, we had, I think one appraiser was gonna finally assess them commercially this year.
If you do one, we're gonna be getting reports on all the other ones.
Well, they, they backed out because they couldn't find all of them.
You know, years ago that there was a couple.
Oh, I'd say we have over fifty.
Really?
It's like three hundred.
Yeah, between city and county.
Is it, is it that much? I would, I would say.
Yeah, we've, we've got a bunch, you know, now we're getting, we're getting property owners that are buying property and building small houses with the specific purpose to turn it into Airbnb and, uh, that's not a single-family home, right? It's a hotel.
Well, and there's, and what, now how would you do, that is specifically for the short-term rentals, but then like in Milford, there was a, a lady that was doing, of course, they quit doing, Milford, the city of Milford got rid of all their Airbnbs. But what this one lady was doing when I went out there to the meeting that they had, um, she would go stay the weekend with her sister, daughter, somebody in town, and then just do it for the weekend.
Right.
And so is that still considered?
It is. Anything under thirty days.
Do you consider it just temp, like, just for that weekend? I mean, how are you, that's gonna be a nightmare.
We could split the assessment, so, down to the day.
Oh, wow.
So if you use it on a short-term basis, uh, thirty-two days a year, we can assess thirty-two divided by three sixty-five, ten percent. Commercial. It's, it's, the problem is finding them and.
And having them record correctly.
So the transient guest tax was being collected and transmitted, if, if, I, I can't. They won't give me that information, who paid what, uh, because it's income, right? You can back into that, so. I mean, we deal with income directly, so it's our problem, but we're not given that, so. One county was gonna and they, they backed out because, uh, it was the, I think it's the uniformity clause in the constitution, which makes sense. You, you have to do them uniformly. If you only find half of them, it's better to find none of them than to find half of them, I guess. Because of how you ask, but if you ask the constitution, I guess it's.
Well, yeah, I definitely think you guys need to maybe do some research with Betsy and try to figure out how.
We had a, we had an individual that was gonna purchase a house out Laurel Canyon, uh, as a summer home, weekend house, maybe. And then leased it out the rest of the time as an Airbnb. It was like, can I do that? And I'm like, well, technically no, but here are the steps you need to take in order to be able to do that. So we had the public hearing set up. Everything was ready to go. This was gonna be a big test case for us. And the day of the meeting, he called and he goes, well, he said, so the house was sold out from under me. He said, but I can still get the permit, right? And apply it wherever I buy a house. I'm like, no, it's recite specific, so. So that was kind of disappointing, but, um, I mean, we're slowly getting to a point where we can start to implement some of those things, I think. We're always gonna have people that, a lot of people self-police neighbors.
Yeah.
Will keep track of what's going on, right?
Yeah.
Uh, but you're always gonna have the one person that tries to circumvent the system and we have those and they're on a short list of, it's like a wanted, most wanted list by our door, you know. That are habitual offenders, but you know, you know them and then you can, you can deal with them, yeah, right? You can deal with them appropriately, so. Uh, I mean, that's just, that's where we are unfortunately in this day and age.
What brought me to Troy is, is we, we received a letter and made us aware of some properties that were, uh, we're following up on them, but being used as event spaces, event centers. Convention centers, they're not. Well, there's a difference between incidental use and predominant use. Now, what's allowable by code is different than for me, right? Uh, if it's a commercial property versus something under residence you use from time to time for.
Yeah.
I think income, you know, whether you generate income from it has a big thing. So I've started to reach out to those that we were made aware of to confirm, you know, what we have versus what we don't know. The, the big one I think was, uh, one of them was RV sites, alleged. And trying to see if they truly are, and, and I don't know the specifics of whether those are allowable or not, where they're allowable and where they're not. But if, if they're there, we treat them a certain way, um, if we can get the information we need, so. That, that's what kind of sparked, it's like, well, let's have a hard conversation. We're not the police, you know, we see a lot because we're out a lot. Um, we can convey that, but.
Yeah, and they are really good about when they see something like that, that they think might be a violation, uh, will investigate and if it in fact is, they'll get a, a letter from me, says, hey, you know, we've come to the realization that this is going on on your property. This is what you're allowed to do, what you're not allowed to do. You can do that with this proper permitting, but it's a procedure that you need to follow and uh, so, uh, you need to cease and desist at the moment and then we can address that moving forward, but.
So it's just, and if they were, they're having an Airbnb, they don't have to have a permit first?
They're supposed to, per our zoning regulations, but people just do not, because it's theirs and they think they can do with it whatever they like.
Well, this is kind of new.
It is, it's a brand new territory.
And I honestly had no clue how many we had.
There's a lot.
Yeah, I, I didn't know it was almost three hundred after I was.
Yeah, you know, and I think it depends on when you do the search, when, when football games are in season, your number might be in the hundreds.
Right.
And it can be, it can be everything from someone actually renting a single room, right? To the entire property.
To the entire property, yeah.
Yep, and that's what gets also tricky for us is if it's one room for thirty-three days. I mean, the math can be pretty small, right? Is it worth, is it worth it?
Isn't worth your.
But I mean, you know, to be consistent, uniform it is, but.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I think it's something we definitely need to look at because I think it's only gonna get bigger.
Yeah, it is gonna get bigger and I mean, I, I hope.
And it's not fair to the hotels either.
It's not, you know, and, and their, their lobby group has, has talked to the state, you know, like, hey, this is not fair. So I know the state, it's on their radar, but it's not real high on their list.
I think the more people that complain, and they will.
Sure.
I mean, it has been.
Especially if we get some that actually comply.
Yeah.
You know, and they know their neighbors are not.
Yeah.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be the big issue.
And I know we've talked about it, I, when the city of Milford had their conversations, I went to those meetings and talked to them about the implications.
Yeah.
I mean, they're real, right? It's, it's dollars and cents. It makes a difference.
You know, in a, in a, in a, a community the size of Milford can police that a lot easier than the county can.
Than the county can, yeah, because it's spread out.
Yeah, yeah, we've got stuff scattered all over everywhere, you know, and somebody might put a little two-room cabin down by the creek on their property back behind their house and, you know, without aerial photographs, yeah, right? So. Yeah, so that brings me to a, one more point real quick for my office is, um, we're gonna be up for a new contract with pictometry in the not-too-distant future. So, uh, I've had some contact with our sales rep, with those guys already in terms of what we might want to look at doing. Uh, we can either do higher resolution and do it every three years like we've continued to do, or keep the resolution that we have that the appraiser seemed to be okay with and fly every other year, sort of every three years. So, uh, this is just a real quick, you know, discussion with him. It looks like it's gonna be roughly the same as what we're paying now, but we could do it every other year for the same resolution. So that's just something that we could probably start talking about. Contract will be, let's see, they flew twenty-three. They'll fly again in twenty-six, so. They'll fly again in twenty-six, so the end of this year, I think, is the end of our contract, so. As we get closer to those kind of negotiations, we'll start involving the board and let everybody know what's going on in that way. And of course, whatever contract we get, a copy of, well, I'll have Betsy review it and make sure that it's all up to.
And that comes out of your budget, right?
It does. The cost of those flights and, and, uh, all of those photographs and the, whatever they do to, to those. Uh, all comes out of my budget.
And I think we're by a wide margin his number one user.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're on it all day, every day.
Oh, yeah.
Right, because in addition to the cost of the photographs on the flight themselves, uh, they allow us access to their cloud, right? So they've got, we don't own the oblique imagery, we own the, the nater, the actual orthos, it's a straight-up and down shot. And we can disseminate those to whoever we choose. Those, uh, oblique photos, we just have the right to use them. Right? So we can upload our GIS data to their cloud, it overlays on those oblique, and that's what the appraiser's office uses. The state has said it's accurate enough that they can take measurements off of it, use it for their annual reviews and stuff, so. Um, that's something I need to talk to Travis about. If, if current resolution is good enough, they can do that, or if we wanna see, because I think it's four-inch now.
Which is fine.
Which is fine. We could go to two or three inch, right, which you can almost read license plates at that level, so.
And is it, and, and, if, if four inch means that every pixel is a four inches?
Yeah, so that every, you know, so, uh, digital image is made up of pixels, right, all squares, every square in that image is four inches by four inches on the ground. Right?
And so what's, what's key for us is we have this, this requirement from the state to be within one foot. So four inches, if you're four inches the wrong direction, you could be off by eight inches, that's within a foot. So that resolution works fine for us. The frequency would be great, I think. We haven't even talked about this yet, but, but things change, right?
Yeah, and those, that technology is only gonna get better and more efficient, so as time progresses, we'll, we'll all be getting probably one to two inch resolution. Maybe every year, but that's probably not my working lifetime. I don't know. Yeah, right, uh, that technology changes rapidly, so, uh, yeah.
It's pretty incredible the last few years of that.
Yeah, and as, as time goes by, that technology gets better, faster, and the, the more products that they can pump out there. It's, it's pretty cool, and you know, obviously they gear things toward, uh, local state governments, but. Yeah, it's, it's pretty, pretty nice stuff, so.
So you guys will have this conversation and give us a recommendation?
Yeah, we can do that. Easy. I mean, I know what I'd love to see, but we don't have the money for it, so.
I know, he's got a good handle on what our requirements are, so.
Right.
He's more familiar with the technology than me, but I think he's got a good handle on what we need and what works best, but yeah.
Yep, so like I said, that'll be coming toward the end of the year, I suspect.
Yeah, but we gotta think ahead with budgeting.
Right, and I know, uh, I've, I've been working with Esri, who's the provider for my, my mapping software. Their whole licensing structure is gonna change going into twenty-twenty-six. It's gonna become a little bit more expensive, so right now we have two licenses. We have a primary and an ancillary, ancillary license. And that secondary license is a fourth of the cost of the primary license. They're gonna wipe that structure out and every license you get is gonna be the same. And it's gonna be like forty-five hundred bucks a piece, as opposed to the three grand I'm paying now and the. Eight or nine hundred dollars for those secondary, so that's just something we're gonna have to discuss, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, wait. I love this report that you did, um, with that, um, and I know you don't have a, uh, a, a administrator, administrator assistant. Would there be any way that you could do the, just the top one monthly and send to us in the EDC? And they keep track of that?
Yeah.
And, and so they're just wanting to know, like, the activity in, in the county and what's going on.
I'm supposed to be doing that for the appraisers' office monthly. I, Vanessa sent me an email a couple weeks ago and I did it for the first quarter.
Well, when you send it to them, would, could you do it to all of us too, so we know? Because I'd like to know, I mean, I think it's great we have five brand-new homes in the county already this year. And I think the city has a little bit double that, uh, so six, I think.
Yeah, thanks for sending them.
That's great that we're getting new, new construction.
Yeah, I'll do that, that's easy enough.
All right, awesome, thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
Oh, I'm Travis, so you're the county appraiser.
County Appraisers, that's why I need to come. I know you're doing this.
They did, they did.
Maybe I can't hear you.
Oh. You wanna come sit up here with us and ask?
Hi. My name is Raquel Singo, I'm the, um, CBB director and Rick Dykstra, our marketing specialist is here as well. Uh, wanna say thank you to the commission for allowing us some time. Um, we've got a couple of things that we're gonna touch on. A recap of exhibitor live, which was the reason we weren't here a couple weeks ago or last week. We, I thought it was great, uh, we. What I didn't know about it is, we, so we signed up for a take five. I ended up taking eleven classes. There was a bunch of them that were complimentary and so I was like, heck, yeah, I'm gonna take advantage of that. Um, you guys should have in your handouts a recap of some of, I didn't do all eleven, but I did some that I thought were, were the best. I can read through those if you guys want, or, um, it's a lot. Uh, Rick, also, he's our AI guru, so I'm excited about that. He's got some recap on that. Did you wanna? Talk about yours? So the ones that I really took a lot out of, I mean, I took a lot out of all of them, but, um, is. Uh, building genuine connections, uh, understanding the significance of message-driven communication and trade show success. Um, then there is a couple more, um, tidbits on that, disruption-proof productivity. I felt compelled to take that because in the office setting that we have, it is so disruptive. Just because there's so many other things going on in that building. So I feel like there was a lot of, that I could, little tidbits of that that I can bring back to the office, especially with Mandy. Like, being the face of everybody that walks into that office building. And then measuring carbon, carbon footprint in events, I felt pretty compelled for that, just there's so much waste and. The Californian in me is very, uh, aware of stuff like that, so, um. That, that was, that was a really big one for me too, and then the last one. Was basically the size, the booth size. Our booth sizes that we, when we do events, we are like a small pond. Or a small fish in a big pond, I call it, because we do ten-by-ten booths for the most part. I think the biggest booth we do is for the state fair and that's a. Twenty by ten, um, and so I just felt like that was a, an important one for me to take. So that I could see how to make an impact when there's people that have thirty-by-thirty spaces and literally like. Boofs that are the size of a building compared to our little ten-by-ten booth. So, uh, I came to find out that it doesn't matter how big your booth is, what matters is the information that gets put out there. And the return on investment of the visitors that come to your booth, so we could literally have a table compared to some of these other booths. And have a bigger impact than the big ones that have the lights and all the fancy stuff.
Those bigger ones take away from their message, because there's so much going on.
Yeah, and it's overwhelming, you know, and, and you wanna like see all the things and then you end up walking out and it's like, what did I really see?
Yeah.
So, um, in summary, attending exhibitor live twenty-twenty-five was incredibly beneficial for us. The event offered a wealth of knowledge through a dip, through diverse sessions, as you just heard. We've gained valuable insight, practical static strategies, and innovative tools to elevate our exhibiting efforts. We were able to network with industry experts and peers, allowing us, uh, to further enrich the experience, fostering genuine connections. And collaborative growth. Overall, exhibitor live twenty, uh, exhibitor live twenty-twenty-five empowered us to achieve greater success and sustainability. In our events. Um, with that, they did announce the next two years, uh, next year, twenty-twenty-six is gonna be in Tampa Bay. And twenty-twenty-seven is gonna be in Denver. Um, also, I, there is a certification program through exhibitor live called CTSM. Um, it's certifying trade show management. I have enrolled in it. Um, I haven't paid for anything yet because I wanted to, to get approval from you guys. It, it's pretty intense. Rick is a CTSM, um, graduate?
Almost.
Almost, um, he's been working on it for quite some time. I am anticipating that if I get permission from you guys to, um, enroll in this, and I, I don't, haven't looked into the costs, exact. Costs or anything like that, but if I'm allowed to do it, all of the classes that I took are CTSM certifiable classes. Um, I should be done by the twenty-twenty-seven program, um, in Denver, so. Again, I will give you more information on that as we get closer. Um, did you wanna tell about yours?
So before I begin, I think we both hope that there's opportunities that we can share this with people throughout the county, this, this training. Uh, I concentrated on, uh, artificial intelligence, but I did go to some other ones. One was, uh, ROE, return on emotion. And, uh, I'll just highlight a few things, uh, emphasize measuring how events make attendees feel, think, and act. And, uh, return on emotion has become increasingly vital for brands and our brand is Gary County. And what it stands for and just great history, great outdoors, great service, a great place to be. Uh, and, uh, it helps build a lasting relationship with the audience, and so we're kind of focusing a little bit of that. We are focusing a lot with AI. Uh, the first one I took was utilize AI to position, elevate your corporate brand. And, uh, uh, business that embraces AI can create a more dynamic, personalized, effective brand experience. One of the things that we're now working on is to establish a chatbot. Uh, so twenty-four-seven, there'll be somebody to answer you and you can speak any language that you wanna speak and so we're working on that right now. Uh, another class I took was driving engagement through conversational AI. Uh, and then I think it comes back down to chatbots and using automation and there's a lot of it. And then the last one I took, uh, that I wanna discuss here was integrated marketing communications. Uh, which is, uh, it helps us deliver a unified and relevant message, so we're all concentrated and focused on what our message is, so. Uh, like she says, it was very interesting. They've assigned me what's called an advisor for my CTSM. She works for Oshkosh. Uh, because they know I'm military here, they assigned me somebody that works with the military. And so we will meet this Thursday on Teams and she is my advisor for CTSM, so. Uh, it was worth it, uh, it, it, uh, it's amazed what AI is doing, folks. I, I'm telling you, it's just incredible, so.
Well, I don't know, you talked about the policy, so I would like to at least get a, a generic, um. Start of a policy AI for the county and you've been, you've been voluntold today. Thank you, because I do think it is the way, I mean, even the military is using it.
Everybody.
For a lot of stuff.
Everybody.
Yeah, um, next we wanted to talk to you guys about, um, the butterfly house for the nature center and I will let Rick.
It collapsed. I don't know if y'all know that, but the butterfly house with that snow that came in and the wind, it collapsed a butterfly house. Pat Zawalski has no funding, and so it came to us, and I think it's very important, you've got the handout about it. Uh, we can get it backed up hopefully before spring, but the handout says it all. It's an investment, Gary County's tourism, educational resource and just our wellbeing to have that reestablished. Again, she has no funding coming from cash flow while I personally fix it, and so I think it's important and, uh, I think we have the funding for it. And I would ask that we support the effort to rebuild it.
I, I think it is a word because, um, I, I think that, uh, our Milford Nature Center, people come from all over.
It's an attraction.
Place and that butterfly house is probably my granddaughter's favorite.
When my wife was teaching, taking field trips out there, you know, it's just what a great asset.
It is, and it, it is truly, I mean, people come from all over and I, I would, I would not have a problem with this. I mean, I think this is exactly what the, those monies are for.
Thank you.
I agree, I think that that's what CBD is about, is funding some of these, you know, drawing.
Thank you.
Uh, people to the lake area and especially that, I too, when, when we went, that was one of my, the kids' favorite places to go to, so I think. It's a good deal.
Pat does such a great job.
She's wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, she does. We are very lucky to have her, she's so knowledgeable.
It was almost, it was almost like when Chuck Audi quit, it was like a resource.
I know.
Oh, my goodness.
I still ask him. I, I make a motion that we, uh, do four thousand dollars to support, um, the major, major center.
When you say we, that, that's coming out of.
Yes, right, yes. We have to make this.
I'll second with that to support.
Thank you.
We've been moving, saying in all favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Um, one more thing, um, well, a couple more things, but real quick. Uh, wanted to circle back around with the small market meeting, uh, summit that we had, uh, brought to you guys about in Branson. So there's been a little bit of a shift. Um, there is a bigger, uh, small market meeting event taking place in Buffalo, New York. Which costs a lot more money. I have zero intention of going to Buffalo for something like that. I just don't think that our CBD would draw anything. But that is where Manhattan is gonna end up going, so with that being said, I still think it's important for us to go to Branson. And we did, um, find two other partners that are willing to partner up with us and go. So the cost for us would still be the fifteen hundred dollars. The other two entities are, um, Acorns Resort and, uh, Rock Springs Ranch. So, um, we had kicked around ideas and we did reach out to other communities that, um, that we thought might. Take advantage, one of them being Clay Center. Um, we didn't get much feedback from them. And as soon as we talked to these two, I mean, they were, they jumped on it, so. Um, with that being said, we're still attending, it's just in conjunction with two other entities as opposed to who we originally thought. And again, um, the cost of going to Buffalo is almost twice as expensive. And it just, you can't split that one the way you could split the one in Branson.
Was this the one that you were, uh, talking about, the Manhattan?
Yes.
Manhattan, so they're out of pitch now.
Did they all out, they asked us to be?
They did.
They do that a lot.
They did.
Reach out to you.
To us, yeah, they did that with the health department, too.
So, um, you know, I, and I felt like, as in my role, it was, it was beneficial for us to go. And so I felt upon, you know, to take, to take upon myself to decide, you know what? If we can bring in other partners that we can do it with, then why not?
Well, and both of those entities are very.
Reading space.
Right, right, and yeah, I mean, I have, I have a whole spiel that I could, um, you know, read to you guys if you wanted to. But I just think that, um, you guys obviously are, are understanding that this is, it's a good, it's a good investment for us. At a fraction of the price that, and I just, I think going to the East Coast isn't real suitable for us for what we're gonna get out of it. I don't think we're gonna get out of a trip to New York what we would get out of a trip to Branson.
I totally agree.
I appreciate that.
Okay, good, and then, um, board size, we had discussed reducing the size of the board. I don't know if you guys had come up with anything.
Discussed that any further.
Okay, and I. Okay, and I, Matt, the reason I, I, I'm asking is because our board meeting's coming up next week, so I just wanted to see. And obviously, the existing board is who is, who, you know, got the invitation to come. And also, quick update on the visitor guide, that is on press, so we are, um, just now, just, I don't know how long. Um, it's gonna take, but it shouldn't be long before we have hot off the pr, hot off the press and we're excited to, to share that. Um, with you guys and tomorrow we will be in Topeka with me, Kansas for, um, what is it?
Meeting planners.
Uh, meeting planners.
They got about twenty-seven of them.
Yeah, and, um, so we will be going there, um, in the afternoon, it's, uh, like from four to seven. Um, but we'll be heading out there to help set up and everything, it's at the Topeka Zoo. Um, they asked us to bring something. Uh, that ties our community that is, um, like a consumable product, so what we did is. We are bringing, um, pint bottles from the Hildebrand. And with a little certificate that says, come and redeem them here, so hopefully that'll give us some. Um, visits and, and interest in the fact that we have this really cool dairy with milk. And, and the pint bottles are just super cool, in my opinion.
And we put in for, just so you know, we put in for a grant for a road study out there.
Okay.
For, you know, both safety with the high school and economic development with Hildebrandt being out there.
Awesome, yeah. Oh, yes.
So the attraction development grants have closed, closed for the year. For this, the spring, we had one person put in for one. We was hoping that we'd have three, but only one. And that was Acorns Wild, the Elk. They're going to build a welcome visitor center out there.
Isn't that Dickinson County?
What's that?
Isn't that in?
He's building across the street, which is Gary, so.
Oh, okay.
So.
I, I think we need to have a discussion about that.
Okay.
Before it's approved.
Yeah, we, we have, we have nothing to do with it. He puts in what we have.
Yeah, but it's our, but.
It's a state.
Oh, for the state. I thought it was for through our.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, okay.
It's a state thing.
Oh, all right. Oh, you meant we, as in Gary County has that. I thought you meant your grants, okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
That's it.
Kelly, did you get an answer? What, what is the, what are you going to do with the size of the board then? Or Betsy, are you going to have something heard by the next meeting or?
I don't think that, from where I've read that, you can have no board or you can have the 10 members. Is my take on how I read that statute.
So there's no in-between?
I, I, I've been told other counties do have, and have reduced it. I don't know if they've done a charter to do that. But the way I read that statute is you can have no board or you can have the board, the statute directs.
Well, let's look into CVD about the charter so we can, because I think it makes sense. Especially because they've been having such a. Okay. Do you have some other boards that are less?
I can, I can research, get that to you.
Okay, because I have their county councilor probably.
I'll, I'll get it to you.
I hope.
Because I agree, if you're, if it defeats the purpose, if you have 10 people on a board and only four, five show up all the time, then, you know, why have a board that big? You have to get people to that are going to attend.
Yeah. Right, right, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
You ready, Jackie?
Sorry.
I'm just looking to see what this place does.
Okay, Jackie Reisinger, Registered Beads. I put in some packet information to the clerk's office last week for the Fiddler Property Fraud Alert System. I want to start the discussion and set a little bit of framework just to say that I'm not asking for this money from the general fund or anywhere else from my budget other than the Registered Beads Technology Fund. That would include the initial cost of implementing the system as well as the annual costs that are involved with that for the maintenance. And this would be a service that is completely free to the taxpayers of Gary County. So I know that what I gave you guys was the description of what it is. He had included some pictures. This is what was sent to me from, this is the representative. This was the first thing, I don't know what order they had them in, this one. So this just kind of explains what the system does. And he had used Shawnee County as an example. The Fiddler, Mark is my contact right now, but they have people that would build the site for us. They would build our platform. What they do then is I would export daily, I would export a reception report, which we print those off anyway for my office. And it just has all the information from every document that we record. So it has grant or grantee, legal description. And then I would export those, just email them over, and they would upload that information to their system. So the property fraud alert, it does not prevent the fraud from happening. It can't. So, because it's happening after the document is reported. But we, it makes the taxpayers aware that there is potential fraud or possible fraud. So it's super straightforward to sign up. That's what this first packet is, is kind of showing the website. And so you would hit continue. If you hit the learn more about the property fraud alert service on the website, it would just give you like frequently asked questions. And he said, all of this is super customizable for us. So he and I would work together to figure out what we want on that website. The second page of that packet is showing how you would sign up. You just put your name, your last, your first and last name, how you want to receive the updates. And then if it's emailed, then you would put your email in there. So they are taking our reception report and they're looking at the names that are recorded in those documents. So they build that platform for whatever method we use to index. So ours is going to show up last name, first name. And we do, if it was Keith Asher and Anita Asher, we're going to put both of your names in our indexing system. So it would pick up both of those. And if either you or your wife were signed up for it, you would get a notification within 24 to 48 hours of them receiving a report. Hey, something was recorded with your name on it. So it's not about the legal description. It can be used with business names, trust names. And it was, I was confirming with Mark last week when I was putting my notes together. So when he first did the demo for us a few weeks ago, you could sign up for up to four names per delivery method, per notification method. So text, email, or phone call. And when I talked to him last week, he said there's no longer a limit. So like for me, my parents don't want to mess with that stuff. Like I could be the one to put their names in and keep an eye on that. And then I also think about the other side of this, anybody can put my name in there, right? And get notifications about what's recorded with my name on it. And that might be a concern. I was trying to think about both sides of it when thinking if this was the right thing for us to do. But all of these are open records anyway.
They just come and give your name.
Right.
Ask what you had.
Yeah, and we have those reception reports available for people to look at in our office. It's also not going to provide any information that's confidential in any way. It's just your name that you're registering with them. So anybody can put anybody's name in there.
How do they give the Fisher? How, how do they tell whether it's, there's, there might be two Jackie Reisenders? How do they, how do they?
Um, I thought about that. I did not have a chance to ask him. And like, super common names, I can ask about that. You just may be getting that notification for that.
Just to make sure it's not yours.
Right.
Verify that.
Right.
Yeah.
So the, the way it works is if you get a, if you sign up and you decide you want a phone call notification, they will take a recording of my voice, which I don't love that part. But it would be a recording, so it's more personal. Like this is a message from the Gary County Registered Beads Office. And then it says, a document was recorded with this name. And so it gives them a callback number. It would be the Fiddler Customer Service. So that was one thing that I loved about this one is that they, they kind of triage those calls for us. My office would not be inundated with phone calls about, well, I got a call, or I got a text, or I got an email. Not that we wouldn't be there to help people, but it's kind of like a first line kind of thing where if they can help explain, they'll know the document that was reported and can explain that to the taxpayer. So they'll be able to see that. They would understand what our coding is in our system to say, well, it was a mortgage release that was recorded. So if you paid off your mortgage recently, that's why it was recorded. And that's why your name popped up.
And it would say it was in Gary County.
Right. Yep. And then all of that, he said, is customizable to the email that gets sent out. I have control over what is included in that. And I think there may be in this first packet, there, oh, there's a press release in there. And then there's an example of the email that would be sent as well. And we could customize all of that. So I know a lot of people around the state have had this. I don't have the numbers exactly. He gave them to us during the demo. But I know that the Fiddler Property Fraud Alert System is very popular among the Registered Beads in Kansas. It's also the most affordable that I've heard. They, I did get a demo, I had a demo with our software company that we use for our regular recording software. It was like double. So I, which I heard anyway, but I still went through the demo. And it, the initial cost would have been almost $14,000. And then the annual cost would have been, I think, 22 or 2,300. I'm pretty sure, I did include that in the packet items as well. It's the last one, just to show you guys that I did shop this around a little bit. I didn't just take one and go with it. But they also, they don't have the customer service that Fiddler has. So we would have been taking all of that on ourselves too.
Trying to make sure. Jackie, I know that technology fund is to be used for things like this. Have we had any cases of fraudulent?
Not that I am aware of. There have been a couple of things that I've kind of wondered about. And I, I just see on the list serve a lot of concerns about fraud. And a lot of people, I think since I've, I've been in the office a little over five years now, we have one taxpayer who calls once or twice a year. I always recognize her. I, I forget her address, but she's always worried about stuff being recorded on her property. And hey, I just want to make sure it's in my name. We have a lot of people come in to the office asking those kinds of questions. Well, I saw this title lock email.
Yeah, I was going to say they probably.
Commercial or, you know, I got something in the mail. And it can happen. And the problem is, is I always tell people, our records are not search, our records are open records. But we do not have them accessible online like some counties do, that you can just go in and just look up anything you want to look at. They're so open for someone to come and search if they have questions, we will help them. But we don't make it as easy. And we have checks and balances.
Sometimes the, the foreign people anymore that are starting to look for more land and stuff around.
Right.
Kansas even. So, you know, that is concerning. So it's one type of the secure measure that you could take. And then you could see who's actually trying to get that information. So I think, you know, it's a good thing in, in the climate that we're in.
Right, and I always tell people, it's not 100% preventable. I can't do that. I have to.
Nobody can.
Right. But we see the documents. And I tried to explain to people, we do have checks and balances. And it would, I mean, it would take more steps. You'd have to find a notary that would be willing to risk their notary and their job to, to lie for you. But it's not impossible for that to happen. I have looked at this system for, since last June, when I went to the conference in Emporia for the Registered Beads Association. And I've kind of just had it in the back of my mind. I think that this gives the taxpayers peace of mind that if I can do that for them, I want to do that for them. I think that it kind of puts it more in their control too. If they want to sign up, they can. If they don't want to and they don't want their name involved with all of it, that's fine too. They can, you have to go and seek it out to sign up for it. So I think this is the right time. We're kind of in between years for bigger projects for my tech fund. So I wanted to try to get it implemented this year. But because of the procurement code for Gary County, since it is the $7,000, I knew I had to come and get approval for that, so.
I'm good with it.
I am too. I make a motion that we approve that.
I'll second.
I'm moving second to sign up for Fiddler for Property Fraud Alert. In all favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you for looking into that. Because I think it'll give people some peace of mind.
Who puts out the press release?
Do what?
Who puts out the press release?
Um, I think they prepare it, but then I would put it out. And then I also did have in my notes, so from the time I tell, give him the go, it would be 30 to 45 days that it's up and running. So that's within building our platform and getting all of this stuff customized for us, so.
I just, how, how are you going to get the word out that this is available?
So they, it's a link. It's a specific link to get there, like those examples of the Shawnee County website. So we can put that on our website. We could put it like on the Registered Beads page. But then also I was going to talk about, ask whoever I need to about getting it on the main page. And then I was wanting to get it on the radio, get on the radio and talk about it. Put on G C Post, probably using their press release. They also provide, it's in the proposal, but I also took notes of it. They will provide five posters and 1,000 flyers so we can get those out. And I was kind of hoping to talk to like title companies to see if maybe we could put some flyers in their offices and banks or anything like that in the.
Senior Center.
The Senior Center, yep. All that stuff to kind of get the word out.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get that signature now? Can I get that signature now?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, perfect. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
I don't know. Probably got it. And. Yeah, so I, I'm not sure really what it is.
Are you learning anything, Pat?
Am I what?
You learning anything?
Oh, my gosh, yes. I wouldn't do your job for $10,000.
I would.
Oh, no, we are not. We try, but we're not.
So do all these committee, you know, they, every one of them comes every week?
No.
Oh, it's on an alternating schedule like once a week?
Yes, yes. HR and finance probably do, and public work probably do the most.
Okay.
As far as that's creeping us because they're probably, you know, for stuff we need to know about G I S and.
Is it hard to keep like city and county apart because you overlap? Or not?
People think, it's not for us, but, but the, the public does, you know.
It's hard to keep the perception.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
You know, I've never had time to do this before. Now I'm almost dead, but I still want to find. Well, I just, I just never knew.
Now, we're glad, we wish more people would be. And we're actually, I don't know why I thought it was going to be on the agenda, but we're actually talking about having one meeting a month at night.
I saw that.
So, so more people can come.
The paper.
Yeah, the paper, yeah. So more people can come, so.
But then you have to worry about who you get too.
Now.
I'm going to try the city commission. I want to see what it does.
See you tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, no time.
Seven PM. If you want to show up early, you can sign up for a public comment.
I don't really comment, I'm just learning.
Yeah, you can come and say.
So many people like me, I was a teacher, I didn't have time to comment.
Yeah.
I just, I do think it's better.
Sometimes those city commission meetings go past my bedtime.
I'm trying mine just.
Seven thirty?
Yeah.
Because you're retired.
But I mean, you really do have to know a lot, you know.
Well, and that's why we have, we're fortunate to have good department heads that help us with that.
You've got, you've got a attorney and another attorney. You've got two attorneys.
Well, he's only here for another, he doesn't come very often. We don't let him come very often.
He's with the city, right, Brian?
Right, yes.
He's here for the next, uh,
And Rick Dice has been on this job for five million years.
Well, he's, he's gone and they came back. Yeah, he left for a while and they came back.
I mean, I grew back in the eighties and this lady, I would prefer for my class reunion.
Uh huh, at the marriage.
So she's down here.
Yeah, she just started as our
She moved here, I mean, that was just like eighteen months.
Yeah.
So Betsy stepped in. Who's, uh, who's gonna run this?
I don't know.
Discussion.
You, you're, you're the chairman. You run it.
Well.
I think so, Betsy said, maybe. I'm, I'm not sure. Do you?
I, I figured I was asked to come here, so. I don't know.
Travis, you're good with all this stuff on this, this, uh, tax.
Don't worry. How are you?
Good, how are you? I'm gonna stand up there. Yeah, you gotta be stood up there, buddy. You can't, I'll be your emotional support president.
Yeah. The G S A.
Yeah, first it was Troy and now it's, now it's
Great, you're up. Be great, come here.
Well, just so, uh, public knows, introduce yourself and, and then you guys just run away with the N R P.
Yeah, well, Mr. Chairman, County Commission, I'm Britain Stites, City Attorney. And so we're kind of working on a thing. I've, I've agreed to draft it, um, a proposal on the update on the N R P, the Neighborhood Revision Program. And what that is, that's a program that has to be done and also sit, I think it has to get, um, yeah, A G approval, Attorney General approval. That's what we kind of had snaffed you last time on it. Some things we talked about is looking at what the investment basically bar should be. Or that way, we're not using city and more so actually county staff time on it. Because any application fees will go to the county appraiser's office. So don't blame the city on that one.
County Treasurer.
The County Treasurer, yeah. But basically what they'll do is they'll first go to the Billion Code for the City Junction City and see if wherever they're planning to use N R P, the Neighborhood Revision Program, will apply to their either residence, business, whatever. And they have to be on the map that will then be jointly agreed to upon by the, the county commissions, both city commissions. Also goes to the school board eventually to basically say they're okay with it. Cause this way eventually it could affect potential antelarum taxes. Cause if they hit the investment, which we're right now looking at, I think ten thousand dollars for single residents, thirty thousand dollars for commercial or multi-residential. Uh, if they hit those investment thresholds, then they get into the point where they get evaluated, um, by the county appraiser later on to see what the improved valuation is. And so then they'd get refunds or rebates based upon the increased value, the increased end value, not necessarily the whole entire value. So say you have a hundred thousand dollar house, you make the thresholds and then you ended up increasing the value from a hundred thousand to a hundred ten thousand dollars. Then you get a rebate on the antelarum taxes from that extra ten thousand dollars in value. And so that's kind of what we're looking at because we, we've got a community that can need and utilize these, both in the business and residential areas. And what we kind of ran into is what we're looking at it is, was the joys of inflation, what, what should those increasing values be? What should the increase, what should the investment be? So that way, we're not having people say, hey, look, I, I put in a new window or something that doesn't necessarily add value to it. And then we're wasting both city and county staff time evaluating it. But same time allowing people to utilize a tool to reinvest, remodel, renovate. And so, and then the other thing is we need to look at is, I, my recommendation, and this is my personal one upon reviewing it, and with Tyson talks about it, is extending it from the five-year that was the last time to a ten-year. That way people have a full time to be able to recapture that. Because one of the misconceptions about these rebate or refund programs based upon antelarum taxes is that the local entities are losing out on tax money. The thing is, though, if you aren't collecting on it, there isn't an increase in the value beforehand, how are you losing out on tax monies that aren't assessed yet? And so it's encouraging people to renovate, cause we've got a lot of homes that need renovation, remodeling. And we would rather have them use those. I'm sorry, since we're in front of the public, I'm getting more lawyer. Real trial lawyer, I mean, it's coming in. But we get into the thing of, you actually want people to renovate and remodel their homes? Cause we don't want to demolition home. We don't want to use unsafe, um, unlivable and uninhabitable structure aspects of building codes. We want people to use this and have better looking homes, better livable homes, better usable homes. Or buildings, businesses, whatever. We have access to business owners. But we're looking ten-year on it because people are more likely to use that. The five-year is actually limited to apply for it. And so it's kind of what we're looking for. And the other thing is we want to make sure it does not have a sunset. That way it can just be renewed and, and reevaluated. That way, not every ten years, we have to remember in case Ms. Edwards and I are not still in our roles. That way the city and county and the residents and the citizens can still utilize the program down the road without us having to come back and rejuvenate it every time, which is kind of a headache. That's kind of what we're at right now. I, I just have had a few other things I've had to draft and do, so I don't have a draft yet, but I've agreed to do that. And we're basing it off the old one. Just need to get that finalized.
And the old one was five-year on residential?
Yeah. It was, how about ten-year on residential and commercial?
Yes.
Which I don't have a problem with. I, I think in, in the grand scheme of things, uh, I don't think it's gonna, it, it's not a huge amount, if, whether we do five or ten on those. And, and the areas that we have that were decided on are the areas that need the revitalization, not the new areas of town that are being, being, um, developed. So this is exactly what I, it's revitalization of that, of those neighborhoods. I, I'm good with the ten-year. I know we talked about five-year for both, or five-year for, uh, single and then ten-year for commercial. But I think that having that for consistency, both are ten years.
Um, so if you had the ten thousand minimum, but let's say they did a twenty-five thousand improvement, then the twenty-five is all that would count for revitalization?
Yeah, it's, so it's never on the land. It's only on the building. And then it's on the improvements that you make to the building. So it started out at a base value of a hundred thousand is a good example. And if you increase it to two hundred thousand, if you did that much, it, it would be based on that additional one hundred thousand dollars value gain.
And you locked in the, the year before the valuation?
You lock it in, so the way that, and this is covered by statute, the, the base values on others are locked in before the plan is in place. So if this is gonna be called the, let's say twenty twenty-five plan, uh, the January one twenty twenty-five values are set, those would be the base value for everything regardless of the year they apply. Now, if, I guess that, if you, if you revisit the plan at some point in the future, that becomes key cause you can reset that base year. We don't want twenty years from now to be referencing back at the same time.
And, and that's why you review it every once in a while. You don't necessarily just
Right.
whole, like re, rehaul it or whatever. Like you, you want to actually go back and review it. So, okay, what year you're going for a base year? Maybe every five years we come back and say, look, we got a ten-year program, but any new one starting in this day, we'll use this as the base year or something.
That's, yeah, that was my question is, do we need to set that timeframe for reviewing it?
And I think in here, I think in the new one, we did say we were gonna relook at it after five years. The one where Regis did. Cause I think we added that to repeat. No, I don't, I think they want, didn't want it to expire. They just wanted us to review it.
I'm sorry, no, I think the current one will expire.
Yes.
But, but in the future, we, we want to say, hey, either five, ten years, whatever.
The one, the one we're gonna approve today.
Yeah.
They, they didn't want.
Yeah, and so, yeah, all you have, all you have in front of you is the proposed tri-fold brochure. That way they're easy to hand out or put online.
Yeah.
So we have to have a hearing and publish it twice. And once we get the actual plan in place, then you're
Okay, then after the hearing will I think there's some people waiting for us to approve this for the ten-year. So I want to, I, I know the E D C is talking at the bit to get it done.
A little bit.
Yeah, they've been sending us emails like constantly. So, so, um, I think the only thing that we, we agree to everything, but doing the residential for ten years instead of five. So, uh, if you guys have any issues, I knew you were
I, I have a, uh, I think the rebate program, N R P is wonderful, just from historical purposes. I, I wish there was some, uh, some way to tie in the fact that, you know, because, you know, some of these people are in the plan for ten years and we've had, and it's mostly commercial, as you recall, Travis. You know, we have the human, uh, uh, a couple of these houses down around this area, too. And it just kind of is, I wish there was a way to tie in if you're in a program for five years, you know, and they get the benefit of that. Then, you know, when they get to the fourth year or the fifth year, when it's time to get out of the program and start paying the taxes without a rebate, then they protest the taxes that year. So they're, they're getting the benefit of the program during, you know, the five-year period. And then the sixth year, they protest their taxes and, and they get the taxes lowered. And so that's kind of aggravating to me. And we had a lot of them and, and we had a lot of commercials, uh, businesses. They're right at the start of this rebate stuff that went in. And then at the end of the period of time, then they either, you know, they got out of it. So, so that being said, I wish there was some way that that could curtail. I don't know what that would be to curtail that. But another thing is on this third page of the rebate is it has rebate work. And then it's got it as a refund. It's not a refund. It's rebate. And I think that word needs to change because a, a refund is a refund on something you, you bought in a, on the, right there.
Oh, at the top, yeah.
It's not a refund. It's rebate. So that needs to be changed to me on that brochure.
It will, will be easy to make sure they, they change that.
Yeah, I mean, do you agree? Because, yeah, refund is, you know.
Yeah, we, we just need to use the right language for it.
Right, yeah. But anyway, that's just my only comment. I, you know, I like, love it. And, you know, when this, uh, N R P program started, what the intent was and where it has gone is, you know, and I, and it's a big program to incentivize people to come and, and have businesses here. So I feel bad in one sense saying something. On the other hand, you know, uh, the intent was to provide relief for people that can't afford these for a period of time, get into a house and be able to, to do that. And then have that period of time to adjust, to make your payments in the future. And then, but now, you know, so that was a concern of mine. I think it's a wonderful program. I just wish there was a way to entice these people to
Yeah, there, I mean, there are, so, so your, your rebate amount is established that first year. It'll never be more than that. It could be less if the building were to decrease in value over time, right? But if, if you, if you realize a hundred thousand dollar gain that first year, that establishes that rebate. If that property continues to increase in value beyond that, your rebate is still that first amount. So there is a, an incentive there to visit with us and ensure those values are, are correct over time. Cause
Well, we had that one that went on.
Yeah.
For, uh, killed it and went on and on and on. I don't know. I think I was gone.
Right.
Years.
Um, the other thing in the language, I think in, in the old one, it did say that, uh, the period of applications was till a certain day, at which point the plan shall be renewed, revised, or allowed to expire. You could explore that language to see how, I think that was the key word.
Many corporations know how to work that. I mean, you know, they've had to take advantage of it.
You know, they used to sell houses with it and it would transfer with, with the property. So that, the, you know, you build a house and whoever's gonna buy it knows for a period of time they're gonna receive that benefit. I think we got a better handle on, on procedural side of it, at least on, on the appraiser side as to how to make it work, you know?
So has commercial and multifamily always been ninety-five percent for the full ten years?
For what I can see, yeah. And then residential was scaled. I think it starts at ninety-five and was it seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five? Something like that?
Yes.
It's always scaled from a higher percentage to the, over time.
Cause I know wine dot county and some of those areas that have the re, N R Ps and such stuff, they've really, um, I'm not sure how they manage them. But, you know, I mean, that's, I mean, that's a very beneficial program for a lot of cities. But it's just like, I guess on my end of it was what we were dealing with, like, ugh, just
Yeah. And there was a period of time here where it was really, I mean, it was utilized often. Our, our spreadsheet's gotten smaller, right? But I mean, it was pages and pages and pages.
I, for, for drawers full.
Yeah.
And N R Ps.
Well, when we, I know, um, just like when you guys were talking to the, the, um, what was it called? The rural housing?
R H I D.
Yeah.
Now, now it's the invested housing.
And, and, and people were wondering, you know, were asking me about that. If, if the, that new area was in the N R P and I should know. And I, and I feel like it shouldn't be because they already have, uh, you know, the taxpayers of, of Junction City are paying for that area right now for not having specials. So I feel that that is the incentive for that, whereas the N R P is for the areas that need revitalization. So, um, I make a motion that we, um, uh, approve what was presented on this draft.
That's the cable.
The move is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, and then you guys will work up for a public hearing.
Yeah.
A publication, or publication, public hearing.
Yeah. You know, and then just something, since you brought the R H I D those before, there has been talk of doing an R H I, R H I D downtown in the Main Street area. But if you have, that overlap with N R P. And from my understanding, if you have N R P or R H I D, you can only utilize one or the other. You can't utilize both. So you can't double dip in those programs for, for the rebates.
But they can still have the R H I D available to them in the same, even though the N R P is there.
Yeah, for, for Main Street for the downtown areas and Central Business District. They have a special subsection of that act. So that way you can do it for second story housing in a central business district. So that's what the, that's what the intent is for that.
Okay.
That way it's just part of the whole revitalizing that. There's no look at right now for R H I Ds in other areas. But I don't think it's a bad thing just to look at in the future. Like we tried to communicate before when we had the previous one come. There's nothing set. My take on that, though, is maybe if we just tried in a subdivision or two of those land bank lots. And then, and the reason that I'm bringing up before you is because both the county commission and the school district would have, uh, the ability to veto that. I'd ask them not do it if it happened because it's much the same thing as the N R P. I know Travis does not like R H I Ds.
No. Travis doesn't have an opinion.
No, I know. But, but I know it's a lot more work for him, especially on the, on the Main Street stuff. We're getting the software lined up and we talked about before.
Just creating parcels of it upstairs. That's a Troy, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so never mind. You're good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm
There are some land bank, um, in the N R P area, um, which is down on Grand Avenue.
Yes.
And so, I mean, those, I think that is an area that needs to be revitalized. But I, I'm
Definitely.
I already feel like, especially for somebody who pays specials up in that area, that we are already paying for that area.
Nope, that's fine. But I just want to let you know that it's kind of a tool, it's a tool out there that we haven't utilized, but other communities have utilized successfully. But again, if R H I D and, and N R P overlap, it's only one or the other. You can't, can't go for both.
Yeah.
That's, that's only fair.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
You did great. And it wasn't hostile, so.
Not this time.
We're loving you.
Betsy, you're on deck next.
Okay, um, on March tenth, twenty twenty-five, we have a discussion about redemption costs for the tax for closure sale. Um, I prepared a resolution. And so if you guys approve the resolution setting the sum of four hundred dollars, um, three hundred and ninety, which is the, the kind of general fine, is ten dollars, will be settled with the district court. Then I'll do a motion with the attached resolution and get it to the, to the judge for his review.
Not to be picky, but say that. Say sent versus set to district court. Third line, there will be a result. Last sentence.
No, you set over amounts.
Set.
Set. So of that four hundred, ten dollars will be set over.
Okay.
Um, I make a motion that we, um, approve resolution zero three thirty-one twenty-five. I'll second.
You're moving second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Action carried.
Okay, and then, uh,
Do you have a master copy or this?
Whichever copy you guys, I have an unsigned copy, but I just wanted you guys all to look at it and then mystery so I can all mystery so. Um, and then also I seventy, and I asked Mr. Myers to come over and, uh, about I seventy with, with us. But, um, we've received the offer for four thousand dollars an acre, it's five point two nine acres. Um, I have rejected that offer, um, after we talked. Um, with, uh, there was a consensus from the board that that was low. Um, and I also discussed with them that it didn't seem that they'd allowed any amounts for fencing. And I also discussed with them that it didn't seem that they'd allowed any amounts for fencing, cause there's a fence up along there. So Mr. Myers went and gathered just a bid because they are, this project's been fast-tracked, so we didn't really have time to set it out for three different bids or, you know, we usually do a collection of bids. There wasn't time to publish and do those things. So we'll have to do that, obviously, when we put the fence back in, but we kind of wanted a ballpark. And you want to talk about the fence, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, just that I had gathered the costs on it. I don't have to be at those costs.
I do. They have fifty-three, six twenty-five, fifty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-five in fencing costs. And then there were, they anticipated sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty in dirt work. And then we'd also talked about the four thousand being low. And do we think what number? We thought that, that five, it's five point two nine acres, what that was worth. And one number I heard quite a bit was fifty-three hundred. And so that would put us in, I also added three percent inflation to kind of cover us on the fence, because obviously the fence won't be able to go back in until the project is over, which will probably be a year. So we did, I did three percent. I talked to Jeremy and Tammy about that and I thought that was reasonable. And that put us at a hundred thousand and eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
How much dirt work do you think?
I, I don't think there'll be a lot of dirt work involved. It's going to be more so grabbing of, of brush and any trees that are going to be an obstruction on that new line.
But maybe the state will take out all, or take that out.
And that's why I had the fence builder put it on a separate cost. Because if they were to clear all that out, then that cost wouldn't be part of it. The other question that I have is that it would be my understanding that the current fence there is actually KDOT's access control fence. It's not a Gary County fence, so.
I think we own that fence though.
If it's an access control fence, we would not. It would be KDOT's fence to maintain. And so that I think that, and I don't know whether that's a question that needs to be asked. Because if it is their fence, then they should be responsible, my opinion, for relocating their fence back to to the, the line that they have proposed. So that, that is something I don't really know. I haven't been in communication with anybody on that part of it, but I know I'm talking with Cory on some other deals, you know? It was, most of those fences along I seventy are KDOT's access control fence and they're responsible for maintaining them.
But I, I think that they quit. Where they told us is we own Pastor Next I seventy. And it's a state fence and it used to be they'd maintain it, but they said, no, it's on you now to keep it up and maintain it.
Okay.
So I think those are good questions that need to be asked to KDOT.
Yeah.
And there's the other thought. So what happens, let's say KDOT says, no, you just, you gotta tear the fence out, put a new one up, and it's your fence now on whatever. What happens to the existing fence that's there? I mean, is that, do we get that material or?
No, they get another question that would need to be asked here, whether we retain.
Because there's a lot of good wire and posts that we could use somewhere else in the county, maybe. So yeah, I don't know who to talk to.
I don't either. And I don't know if that's something that Betsy wants to bring up in her communications with them or whether it's something I need to reach out to, find a resource to talk to about it. I don't mind doing it. Just feel the situation, you need to make.
I, I, I did communicate that we were giving a fencing and she said that she noticed that it had not been included and the police gave an estimate. And she said, the appraiser must have thought the fence was ours and not yours, but they never said it wasn't ours. And I thought it was ours because previous agreements we've had. So I'm not sure who would be the keeper of that record of who. Because I think we have done some fence maintenance on that.
I know we have a top. I guess I'm just not sure about along I seventy there. I, I have no previous knowledge of any, or if the county's done along I seventy, but not in my time getting it. But that doesn't mean that before my time it's.
Do you recall how it worked when, while we're mixing strip down there on one seventy-seven when they, they acquired some easement off of us and then we rebuilt the fence on our own? I don't know if that would be a finished mark.
Yeah, I can look back and see if I've found some information on that part of it. I almost feel like they gave us an allowance on that.
I think they've kind of got half the fence built in as well. And that they want the county to be involved in fence building instead.
Another unfunded manmade.
Yeah.
So I, I know she does want, I think this is supposed to start happening in June. I know she does want. And so I guess I would like from you guys, an approval if you're okay with the fifty-three hundred dollars to counter on the acreage. And if you're okay with that fence bid, if in fact we will be responsible for putting the fence back. I'm good with that.
Kind of what I thought all along.
Okay.
Okay, that's a good.
But we, just to clarify, whoever you contacted, the fence builder, that's the one we're going to go with, right? Cause we don't have time to do.
Well, no, I don't, I, I think we still have to revisit it when, when we start putting, when we put the fence back out. I think that was to get a ballpark of.
Okay, okay.
What, because we're not going to put the fence out in June. I mean, that's when they're going to start their project. So we'll have enough time to comply with all the bid laws.
I don't think that project's scheduled to be, maybe you know, the completion is in twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
It's pretty lengthy, yeah. Ways out.
I can, I can talk to Jared Trimble and find out.
Okay.
And see whether he knows the timeframe. Cause it goes to bid in June, June or July.
They want everything, from what I've been told, they want everything wrapped up quickly, so they can get it going.
It's a big, big project.
Okay. And then my last thing is North Ridge Drive. We got snowed out back in January. And so there is a petition in front of the board that you guys have said is a valid petition. The rule is, is it has to be on display at the court's office for twenty days. We have to publish it for two consecutive weeks. And then the hearing and viewing has to be no later than twenty days after the last publication. So I wanted to talk about dates where you guys were open to the hearing, May twenty-eighth. Or I guess, wait, that would be April, right? I skipped a month on what I was counting next. So yes, I think April twenty-eighth would work. And it would be about the soonest we could do it. In fact, it's available for the commission. That's a Monday. So if we give in everything to the paper by Friday, it can run next Wednesday. Let's see. So if we get everything in the paper by the fourth, it could run the ninth and the sixteenth. And that would also give it twenty days on display in the clerk's office.
Should we do the thirtieth? That's a Wednesday.
Oh, you want to do it on a non-commission day?
Well, I'm looking at my, yeah. I've got something on the twenty-eighth after commission.
Okay.
I mean, that's, it works for them. Cause I wasn't having.
Cause then we'll come back and we can have the hearing.
Do you have the hearing at that same day after the viewing?
I don't know, but necessarily has to be the same day. I guess we could do. I can look that up with the viewing and the hearing have to be the same day. You want me to try to figure that out?
I don't think it has, I wouldn't think, cause I don't think we were going to do it. Were we going to do it on the same day?
Yeah.
We were going to do it on the same day, yeah.
What's that?
You were, you were into the.
But then it was snowing, so it's not like we could see the road anyway.
No, it had a lot of snow on it.
While she's looking that up, Jeremy, I want to thank you and Tom for taking care of the complaint out, but no reference to the tree cutting. Gary called me and he was very complimentary on you smoothing that over. Thank you.
Yeah, I had a late meeting.
He did. He said he talked to you for a long time and he thought he did. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it too, Jeremy. That concern out there on Bridge, did you figure out that terrible on Burley Hill Road? Because she was pretty adamant, if you see, you could see on Burley Hill Road.
Yeah, I spoke with her and got it figured out.
Okay, good. I appreciate that as well.
She, she's been on that one for a while.
I don't think this is the same person, but because there was someone else on that Burley Hill Road.
Yeah.
But this other.
Oh.
Yeah, this was a separate one.
Okay.
But I think we got that one for a while.
That's what she did say. And then she said that, well, Levi and Chester Steinford had also, anyway, you guys were working around or trying to get some of that fixed because that gravel that had run off into the field, as you can see.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Thomas has been looking at doing some ditching a long day.
Okay. Some of that language when they call whatever it is on those ditches and stuff, I just wrote it down and related to you cause I didn't know what they were talking about, but whatever the.
I thank you for passing that along. Anytime you get any.
Okay.
You don't like to tell me twice.
I just like the ones where it's, it's really not.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, yeah, that was a good one too.
Some of that city county.
So, and I don't want to talk about this at another meeting, but you know, the, the one who had called about the, the old forty area, he wanted to know if we had a, like the city does, the app that you can just report it instead of having to call and then take that to where, you know, our automatically to where like all of your supervisor could see. Is that something our new software has available, do you know?
Uh, no, no, but I will look into it.
Okay. Cause I think that would be, you know, make it easier for you guys too. And then I could say, please report it on the app.
We'll look into that.
I mean, that app's been available in, in the city for a long time, but a lot of people don't know about it.
I think we could have the hear, I, I, it does say the day designated. So I think we need to have the hearing and the viewing on the same day, but I think we could just have the hearing on site.
Well, I, I don't understand why we can't just do an hour early, Keith. I mean, why do we need to do a different day?
Because I'm supposed to.
Are you not even going to be here at all or?
No, I'm.
Oh, oh, okay.
Meeting, but we're supposed to haul cattle that day. Help somebody haul cattle that day.
Well, I know, but can't we just start like an hour early so we could do everything in one day?
You're talking about on the twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Oh, and have like the hearing or the viewing at nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, that might work. Um, yeah.
Cause this, it is our commission day.
Yeah.
We'll do May twenty-eighth at nine for the viewing.
May or April?
April.
You just don't want to, you don't want to hang out in April at all, huh?
Well, I wrote down May when I was looking. But nine AM. We'll get that paperwork together and get it published and.
Are you going to be up there too, Jeremy?
I can, if you'd like.
Well, well involved. Public works.
Okay.
Is that all you had about?
That's all I can. Thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome. Actually, Betsy, just shoot me an email with whatever you're making for me on that or the next steps.
Thank you.
Keith, I thought we were going to have the night meeting on, on the agenda today.
No, I figured we had none.
Well, if we're going to vote on it, it needs to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
We put it on there next week.
Yep, that was my plan. Oh, have you guys gotten any feedback?
Yeah, I think people have said they, they would like for it to be at night. I don't know if they're going to come, but.
Yeah. Have you heard anything?
Yeah, they were kind of the other way, like they're not, if they're not here, yeah. Anyway, they talked like, no, it wouldn't be a good idea, but if there was one, I said, well, we'd like to try it. And you know, I said, well, at what time would you all think it would be a good time? And they said six o'clock because they get, they get off at five-thirty, whatever, six o'clock would be, so. But you know, it doesn't hurt to, I mean, that was just.
No, I mean, probably, a, a complaint I do get is, you know, just like that. She said she's never been to come because she was teaching and so she could never come, so.
I think it just gives people an opportunity.
Yeah.
They could try and, yeah, I think it's a good idea.
So, yeah, let's.
Okay, I'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you see this in your packet? I was asking.
Yeah, I didn't know who was going to talk about that.
Well, yeah, everybody's asked me about it so far. I really have no idea. Courtney got this as an email.
Okay.
She asked me, what do I do with this? I said, well, then go ahead and send to the commissioner. Somebody is on, and I didn't go back and look, on the, on the Kansas Workforce Board.
I think, are you on that, Kathy?
I don't remember.
I don't know.
Now, I'm not sure if this has something to do with it, if this is something new.
They're, yeah, they're trying to like, I, I, I just, some people have been talking about it and they're, they're changing the areas of, of responsibility. And so I think that that's what this is all about. And I mean, I did read most of it. It's pretty lengthy.
Yeah, I think it's very lengthy.
The main thing I did read was that there's no financial obligation from the county.
There is no financial impact to counties where a forced one receives federal funds.
Yes.
So.
I know, like Ben Bennett was on there and then.
I was on it for a while and Alex was on it and I thought that.
I thought it was.
I think the lady that sends the emails, name is Gina Kaufman. I don't know if you've ever received anything. And they might not know if nobody, you know.
Yeah, and I don't know who Courtney got this from. If this one's from a Kansas workforce person or what.
It's originated in twenty seventeen.
This is, under the agreement, each county commission may appoint one of its members to serve on the chief elected official board.
Didn't mind, I didn't. Notified that you were the person.
Yeah, I'm probably late.
And I thought Alex said that he participated via Zoom.
Yeah, there, most of them are on Zoom. When I, I, I was on there on Zoom as well. Of course, it was during twenty-one and twenty-two.
Well, do you want to sign off on it?
Well, it doesn't cost them, right now.
No.
No, that's always good.
That's a nice gift. Yeah, I think we should.
Two different ones.
How do I see that? Does she copy it twice or is it really different?
Well, that first, there's, these first couple pages were the same thing, so.
So, yeah, I think those first two pages, it says Kansas Workforce One Agreement Memo is the same thing. There, that's in their twice.
Right.
So. If they use one of those, I don't know, it's not sitting there. So if you wanna give, let's see. I think it only requires one signature. So I can say, probably in a chair. So if you wanna get that out of your packet and just.
Yeah. Do I hear a motion to approve signature on this?
I saw one second.
Move, sign in for the Kansas Workforce One Agreement Memo. All favor say aye.
Aye.
You're not signing me up for anything, am I?
No. No, I looked through there, it didn't, it was such a general thing and a lot of talking, lots of, what happened?
Tammy, when you sent me the message that, that Al went down, could you still hear us? Okay.
It was just spinning. It did it again just before I came in.
Well, I think it's because I, 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 it, no activity on my computer, it shuts down, so I, I just had to.
So you might have to go in and extend your.
Yeah. Cause I didn't have to sign, re-sign back up when I did, I just wiggled my.
Oh, I know that's an ask. Trent was here the other day, we were talking about your printer.
Uh-huh.
And he said, um.
It is garbage?
Yeah, he said the, the roller assembly to, uh, get one of those is like over a hundred dollars, between a hundred and two hundred dollars. Well, I think we only paid four hundred dollars for that printer, so I'd be down to do that. He said a regular HP laser jet would work fine.
And we don't use it there, I'll just, so it's not like we need a heavy duty.
Yeah, and I mean, I looked that up and they have some that are, you know, two, two, three hundred dollars probably. Now, Kathy, you had asked for legal size, now that would bump the price up.
Yeah, if I could just print over there, I mean, I don't mind getting up and walking over there, it's just that, you know, now it says the server's online, I just don't understand.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, Trent's gonna have to look at that.
Yeah, I'll call him after we get done.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Because I, I don't remember, I don't think this happened during the meeting, but, um, Trent is coming back again, cause Zach is no longer with Next Day.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I sent something to Zach last week and I got a thing back from Next Day that says Trent's gonna handle it. And he was here, uh, Wednesday.
Yeah, he emailed me as well.
Okay, cause I told him you had some problems.
Yeah.
Um, change orders?
Yep, there you go. There's.
And by the way.
Personal property and real estate.
Yeah. Who put the packets together?
Oh, it was between, I think Amy did it.
Well, I really appreciated that, cause I picked them up yesterday, looked through them.
Yeah, probably put, I mean, we worked, cause Dana was gone, we worked to.
They're online.
Get the pack.
Yeah, but it's easier.
Get the packets in order with what's on the agenda.
Do I hear a motion to approve the change orders?
Move.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions on them, but I went down and asked Travis because I wasn't sure. I hadn't seen, those forms are a little bit different, I wasn't sure why.
Well, these AAEs are different than our old change orders. But most of the time, if you look far enough, they can find it, but not always. They don't have as much room for information.
Yeah, I just didn't know why the, uh, usually, you know, when it has the, uh, the refund amount, I, it's just kinda weird how they, they put that on there. A person would have to calculate if that is right or if you'd be able to see that.
Yeah.
Easier to make.
Is that because of CIC?
Yeah. Cause it's a change until the tax dollars, they're gonna have to, yeah, I don't know. I just was looking at, to be looking at them.
So, Betsy, are you gonna look into, uh, our resolution for the ACDB board?
Well, at least see how other counties, uh, decided they weren't gonna have a ten person. Cause when I look at the statute, it says you can have none or a ten person, so if they're operating differently than that, I'd like to know how they got there.
Cause I like. We oughta act on that for a reason.
Okay.
I can ask the clerk in Selene County, cause we talked here five minutes. And see what she.
Okay, do they have a small?
I don't know.
Thanks for having me.
Okay. Oh, I missed, we only designed the resolution.
I wasn't looking.
Do you wanna get that resolution from Betsy to sign?
We have one.
I know, but she said she had a copy of there.
Well, she said which I've had one once.
Okay.
Okay. Somehow I have the minutes and I, I needed it two weeks. You left early, so I couldn't do the seventeenth last week, cause you were the other one here.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
She was on the phone, but she had done, and said they're okay.
Yep.
But, um, so I gotta do the seventeenth, or you do.
Make a motion that we accept the seventeenth.
Second. Uh, both in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
And now for the twenty four. I was trying to print that off to send it to you, Trish, and I, um, I just had that one sentence on there, um, so I'm trying to print it. Trish, she wanted me to take out. Oh, um, during her report, I said that EDC was doing a traffic count in Grand Avenue and she said they were not.
It was the, you had, you put it in the next.
I put it in the grant.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I was reading that.
They were the ones.
I did that twice.
Yeah, yeah. But it wasn't the EDC that was doing the count, it was the other ones, yeah, yeah.
And then Trish wanted me to take out, uh, during the department head meeting about the disaster plan, and I said that she thinks the trailer office should be the main office to be able to work right away. And she said she didn't say that, so I'm gonna take that out.
I think what I said was, I, I was trying to think of that. I know I didn't say specifically them, it depends on what time of year it is to see who would be, if we were talking about that, so.
Okay, okay. And Kathy, what, what was your deal?
It's my deal.
Yeah. Did you have something that needed change?
Well, I just put on there where it said Commissioner Tremont there. Then I, I changed it to, uh, because the way that it was written just didn't sound right. Said something that buzzed in and I had changed. Um, the public has reached out to her that they felt that it was a public building and they should, should have access to it. Locked the doors, any public building is not acceptable. And I don't, you know, I don't like, well, I think the department has to do what they want to, but, you know, I, it is aggravating when you give some place and you block, you have to jar the door and then knock on, is anybody in there? I. That's all I, I had on there, really.
Okay. So.
I don't, didn't know people would understand what buzzed in to be.
Well, true.
I mean, when you're reading it and you know what you were talking about.
And that's, yeah, it's like, oh, I'm thinking.
Yeah, we knew what you were talking about, but.
Okay. Somebody wanna move?
Make a motion that we accept those minutes with those changes. One second.
Been moving, saying all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Oh, I forgot, during my inner, um, uh, review and updates tonight is the community forum, uh, that's been on by Main Street at five thirty, um, at the Opera House. Is that the pink?
Yeah.
Yeah, I talked to Terry.
Just wanna wear pink.
Told Terry, there's, at the Mac breakfast, but I wouldn't make it tonight, so.
You don't have to, but the guy wears pink. He's talking about like.
Pink goldfish, oh, that's, oh.
Yeah, it, it, basically, he just talks about being unique and, and expanding on your uniqueness of your community and he wears pink to stand out.
I'll try to get there, but that's Chase's breathing day.
So on next week's agenda, we're gonna talk about the evening meeting.
And then, uh, does Jeremy have, Jeremy's on next week too?
He comes next week.
Could you, I, I'd like to talk to her about the, the cameras. I remember we talked about cameras over at the, um, GIS and then also possibly in here.
And in here, you mean for?
Well, they talked about the microphones or, or somewhere.
That was Rick.
Yeah, that was Rick, but, um.
Uh, cameras for the hallways?
Yeah, yeah, didn't we, didn't we talk about it at some point?
Yeah.
And I didn't know if, I know it was brought up about putting cameras out on the front of the building towards the, um, where they can drop off the ballots.
There's one out there.
There is a camera out there, okay.
Yeah, we can look at that.
Oh, okay, good, 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 good.
Well, I know in the past, when we discussed that, we didn't wanna do it in public, or public.
Oh, yeah.
For sensitive reasons.
I mean, they just, we can see that they put something in there.
Know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we know what, we know what you're saying.
Huh?
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, so I don't know whether we have an executive session to discuss that with Jeremy.
Oh, as far as for?
The security cameras.
Oh, as far as where they, yeah, I don't think we should tell them where they are.
Right.
But, but I mean.
GIS, that's where it's at.
Well, I mean.
So were you talking about putting a buzzer in, in his place?
Yeah, I heard he is opposed in there.
Oh, there is?
For them, yeah.
In whose place?
Troy.
Troy's.
I mean, there were.
There's a phone number listed.
I don't think there's buzzer there.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You have to call it.
Yes, 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 I'm sorry.
Sorry you're talking about, but that's, cause that's what.
A buzzer and a camera, yeah.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you wanna share exact places where the cameras are, but.
Okay, and now next week's agenda's, uh, pretty full because Jeremy's got, um,
Bit openings.
Bit openings for, I think, three things. And then his regular reports on. He will be talking about a lot. And the sheriff will be here.
So what all, we have?
Yeah, I'm just gonna.
Okay.
My computer went to sleep. Like Trish was talking about, hers go to sleep. Ugh, I hate that. Okay, April seventh. Crystal Tammy Gair, Public Works, bid opening for three-year landfill hang lease. Bid opening for shop restroom renovation project. Bid opening for Cloud County Community College mowing. Then his regular report. And Jackie's coming in for a quarterly update. And then Jared Trimbleay is coming for EV readiness plan. He called her, emailed me about that. And he said he'd need thirty minutes.
Yeah, I was.
Does he do a parrot line or something, or does he just?
There is a, I mean, I've seen it in our meetings, but I don't know if he can convince us down, I was gonna talk to him.
Yeah, cause that seemed like a long time to talk about.
Well, it's, it's the charging stations and.
Yeah.
It's a long.
Are they trying to get a grant for that?
I don't know, it's, no.
No.
Trying to get state.
Oh.
That was the last I heard, because it's some of the state ones.
Oh, oh, okay.
And there are, and there'd be a date.
Yeah, again, there is a lot of grant funding out, or there was prior to.
Well, it's simply applied for a grant for a charging station.
Uh, Harrington has one. On seventy seven.
Is it out there by the hotel?
Um, by the Pizza Hut.
Yeah.
And then there's another restaurant gonna be going out there, they said, cause it hasn't been used a lot, but I think more, when more stuff is there, they'll probably get more.
They used to have, that one restaurant that was there, that was the best, and I don't know why they couldn't make it, I just don't.
Where was that?
In Harrington. Like there by the Pizza Hut.
Their Mexican restaurant is moving out towards theirs.
Yeah, yeah.
So I gotta go home and deal with my mom's water.
Oh, does Betty not have water?
Uh, it's sporadic.
Oh.
We got cattle over there. Anyway, the well drillers supposed to be coming this afternoon, pull it home.
Oh.
Already had a plumber out to check everything else out, he thinks it's bone.
Are we done?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, yeah, do you have anything else, Betsy?
I do not.
Okay. If so, we're done.